I'd like to call to order the 2023 Board of Supervisors meeting. Could everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Hannah, can you please call?
Ms. Payne?
Here.
Ms. Corporal?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Kiesak?
Here.
Also in attendance tonight, Township Manager Ms. Tealy Coles, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler, Chief of Police Joseph Barterello, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Parks and Recreation Paul Capera, Director of Finance Megas Bandari, Superintendent of Public Works Eric Gartenmeyer.
Thank you. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We have some special items tonight. So we're going to start with Local Government Proclamation. Local Government Day was actually last Thursday. And as you can see, some photos, we had some students from Herbert Hoover join us here in the building. And I know Supervisor Kane and Supervisor Kiesak were also in attendance. So that being said, whereas local government throughout the Commonwealth provide valuable services to the citizens of the communities they serve, and whereas in recognition of the work performed by local governments, the Pennsylvania General Assembly designated the week of April 10th through April 14th as Local Government Week in Pennsylvania. And whereas local government is often referred to as the level of government that is closest to the people, providing important citizen services such as law enforcement, public health and safety, recreational opportunities and public works. And whereas many individuals, including employees of the township and numerous volunteers, participate in providing local government services to the residents and businesses in Middletown Township. Now therefore, do we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, proclaim that April 2023 is hereby designated as Local Government Month in Middletown Township? And be it further proclaimed that we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, will continue to work to promote civic education and engagement in an effort to educate citizens about their local government, strengthen the sense of community, and engage the next generation of local government employees and volunteers? Next, I have the Chief coming up for some special recognitions.
Good evening, Ms. Payne, fellow board members. I would like to call up Officer Glenn McPherson. So we are here tonight to recognize and honor Officer Glenn McPherson on his retirement from the Bucks County South Central Special Emergency Response Team, the CERT team, that's the SWAT team that serves our township in our section of the county. Officer McPherson served on the CERT team for 25 years in several capacities, as a tactical operator, group leader, and later in his CERT career in the team's leadership and administration. Officer McPherson was one of the five original Middletown Township Police Department South Central CERT members, joining the South Central team at its inception in 1998. Officer McPherson retires from the CERT team after 25 years of honorable and distinguished service to the team. His leadership and commitment to the team will be greatly missed. I would like to congratulate Officer McPherson for his many years of dedicated service to the Bucks County South Central CERT team. And Glenn, we have a very nice plaque that we got you to honor your 25 years of service. Congratulations. Hold on. And next, I would like to call up Sergeant Michael Lubold. Okay, we are here tonight to recognize and honor Sergeant Michael Lubold on his retirement from the Middletown Township Police Department. Sergeant Lubold officially retired on Friday, March 31st, 2023. Sergeant Michael Lubold began his career with the Middletown Township Police Department in November of 1989. During his 33 and a half year distinguished career with the Middletown Township Police Department, Sergeant Lubold served the citizens of Middletown Township in many capacities. At his core, Sergeant Lubold was a patrol officer first and foremost. He served the majority of his career as a patrol officer and later, for 11 years, as a patrol sergeant, with one year in an administrative sergeant's position. Even though he would never admit it, Sergeant Michael Lubold was so much more to our police department and community than just a patrol officer and patrol sergeant. Sergeant Lubold was the leader of our police department's Traffic Safety Unit for many years. He took traffic safety as seriously as any sworn officer I have ever met in my career. He was always teaching our younger officers the importance of traffic enforcement with the ultimate end result of safety, leading to less traffic accidents and less injuries and fatalities. Sergeant Lubold is also one of the most skilled, knowledgeable, and talented accident reconstruction experts in the state of Pennsylvania. He has served as either the lead investigator, assistant investigator, or supervising investigator in hundreds of crashes involving serious injuries and fatalities. Because of that, he is one of the most respected crash reconstruction experts in our Commonwealth's court system. His expertise is very often called upon by the court in cases involving serious crashes. Sergeant Lubold has imparted his vast knowledge of traffic safety and crash reconstruction to hundreds, if not thousands, of officers throughout his career by serving as an accident reconstruction instructor. Sergeant Lubold is also a Certified Emergency Vehicle Operations Course Evoc Instructor and has taught Evoc to many officers throughout Bucks County. Sergeant Lubold served for many years in our police department's ATV patrol and also for many years as a field training officer in our police department. Additionally, Sergeant Lubold served for many years as a member of the police department's PBA Executive Board and Collective Bargaining Board. He had a reputation with township administration as being forthright, reasonable, and more than anything else, a true gentleman in the way he conducted himself in any negotiation. Despite all of these amazing accolades and accomplishments, what Sergeant Lubold loved to do more than anything else was come into police headquarters to work a patrol shift. He spent the majority of his career working the overnight shift. He valued nothing more than patrolling the streets and neighborhoods of our township and supervising his squad in only the expert way he could do it, with the goal of keeping our citizens safe. Sergeant Michael Lubold is one of the very best sergeants I have ever had the pleasure of working with in my 31-year career. Very few did it as well as he did, and certainly none could do it any better. I have never worked with someone so universally loved, yet also equally so universally respected. Sergeant Lubold not only served as a boss to his subordinate officers who had the good fortune to work for him over the years, but he also served as a teacher, mentor, and yes, as a friend. He leaves behind a legacy of many talented police officers who have directly benefited from his amazing leadership. His legacy also lives on in his family as his daughter Jackie is a successful and accomplished detective with the Central Bucks Regional Police Department. Sergeant Lubold is a devoted husband, devoted father, and devoted grandfather. But more than anything else, Sergeant Lubold is a devoted servant of 33 and a half years to all of the citizens of Middletown Township. We would not be the great police department we are today if it wasn't for the dedicated and committed service of those like Sergeant Lubold. I would like to congratulate Sergeant Michael Lubold on 33 and a half years of honorable service to Middletown Township. Congratulations, Mike. I don't know if the board wants to take photos. Okay.
Next, we have a presentation from Dr. Wydrill from Pendel and Middletown Emergency Services.
Good evening. So I've been in front of this esteemed group before. First and foremost, thanks to Stephanie for always answering my emails and thanks to the board. So I've been here as the medical director for Bucks County, the medical director for Pendel Middletown. But today, I'm here as a humble volunteer. So I've been a volunteer for Pendel Middletown for just on 37 years now. And I'm here to try to bring the message to our community about the opportunity for volunteering at Pendel Middletown and really many other opportunities as well. April is Volunteer Appreciation Month. So it's a great opportunity to look at the people in our community who do go above and beyond and volunteer for the communities. And wanted to give people a snapshot of opportunities that we have at Pendel Middletown. There's a short presentation that I'll go through and just to remind, you know, people about what we are. So we are your community service, obviously. So we serve not only Middletown Township, but the surrounding boroughs as well. Been around since 1959. We have two stations that we'll show you in a moment in terms of coverage. And we're a combination department of both career compensated personnel and volunteers from the community. We serve about a 25-square-mile area, but that becomes much larger when you include mutual aid as well. And we have about 6,000, actually a little over 6,000 annual responses. So when you look at our coverage map, you can see that we have two stations actually strategically placed out to cover Middletown Township as well as the surrounding boroughs quite effectively and allow to meet an excellent response time. And those two stations, one is on Lincoln Highway, across from the new Wawa, and one is over at Langhorne Yardley and Whitburn Road. It's nicer to say the Wawa than next to the Denny's, which is what we said for decades. So we have a lot of volunteer opportunities. So obviously, we would love to have people that wanted to come out and volunteer the time, like I did early for my entire career with Pendel Middletown, and ride on the ambulance, get certifications and take time to do that because it's a great way to give back and it's a great way to be part of the medical community. But we also have lots of other opportunities that people may not be aware of, and we encourage people to look into that. Sometimes it's providing standby event coverage. So going to a football game or going to another community event is another great opportunity. We do community training for CPR, for stop to bleed, and many other things where people that wanted to be a member of the organization could help us with those educational opportunities. Sometimes it's as simple as building maintenance. It's expensive to run an organization. We're a not-for-profit. We survive on a multitude of different revenue sources, but it's always complicated. And people that can help us with building maintenance and so forth. And then administrative support. Many of you know Nancy Blank, who's been a member of the organization for decades. You know, Nancy's been a long-term volunteer and helps us with multiple administrative responsibilities. There's a lot of benefits to being a member of our organization. So you can get formal EMS training, and that can include basic training such as CPR, all the way up to becoming a paramedic. And we'll help support that to become a dream in reality. Obviously, get the benefit that I've gotten out of it, service to the community that I was born in and grown up in and been a part of for a long time. We have a LoSAP or Length of Service Award Program where volunteer members can meet certain criteria and actually have some dollars that are put into essentially a retirement fund for them as they age. There's a volunteer incentive program that Middletown Township helps support. And then we also provide group term life for members as well. People that join as a volunteer have an opportunity for that as well. So you may say, well, why would I want to do this? Well, first and foremost, it's the ability to give back. We have a long, rich history of service to the community. We're a very stable organization. We thrive. And we're really looking for people that want to help us to go into the future as a combined volunteer career organization. We provide exemplary high-quality care. We work very, very hard to train our staff, have the best equipment and materials to take care of our community. We have cutting-edge clinical programs. Any new program that comes forward in Bucks County or in the Commonwealth, we are on the front of that and making sure that we're doing that and training our people. And we have a commitment to making sure our volunteers are a priority. So I would say to you, come check us out. If you've ever thought about giving back to the community, if you've ever thought about getting medical training, if you've ever thought about being part of the fabric of Middletown Township and the surrounding municipalities, come check us out. I would encourage you to look at our website. I would encourage you, just take that QR code, snap a picture of it. It gives you our location or a website to sign up as a volunteer. There's a lot of opportunity that we want people to be aware of. It's much more than just riding the ambulance, although that's a critical and core function. But if there's other people that would be interested and engaged, we'd love to see them come be a part of our organization. And I'll stop there. My name is Jerry. If my email and phone number are there. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. And again, thank you so much for giving me a few minutes to really hopefully bring more people in to the fabric of Pendel Middletown and to the fabric of Middletown Township. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Wydrill. We have some announcements, some upcoming events. We have Community Cleanup Day, which is Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And then we have Earth Day, which is Saturday, April 29th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM in Cork Creek Park. With that, I will move to public comment on non-agenda items. So is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carmine Carpenter. I live at 637 Hillside. I'm wondering about the capital improvement project with the store drains there. I'm just wondering who I contact about the scope of work and the timeline on it.
I'm the engineer for the township. I'd be happy to follow up with you on the specifics for it if you'd like.
Okay, I can just find your contact information on the website then?
You can. I can give you a card if you'd like.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda items. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as stated?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been a motion and a second to...
Was the Firefighters Park pickleball courts. And alternate for is the repaving of the pickleball courts parking lot. So we were pleased to see that the pricing came in quite favorably. The township budget has 1.3 million for the roadway program and the pickleball court project. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. But the bids for the low bidder, which is James D. Morrison, Inc., came in at $1,140,667 total. And that would be the base and all the alternates packaged together.
That's great. Is there any questions from the board? Seeing as there's no questions, I will accept a motion.
I make a motion to award base bid and alternate bids numbers one through four for the 2023 road program to the total amount of $1,140,600... I'm sorry, $1,146,700 to James D. Morrison, Inc.
Seeing there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions or any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next is consideration of authorizing replacement office furniture at the municipal center. Mr. Valla.
Good evening, supervisors. As we mentioned, I believe it was back in February, we are working on some office improvements here at the municipal building. The building is over 20 years old. And in many cases, there's a lot of original functions in this building. We talked about carpeting back in February. This meeting, it's the second and final component of this improvement is to do office furniture specifically in the building and zoning in the police departments. Those office spaces combined would change the workstations for over a third of our office-based employees. Over the last several months, we've been working with three different CoStarz vendors. The one that we are recommending, Lizelle Office Furniture, was able to work very cooperatively with us on the price. The other two vendors were 30 or as much as 90% more for basically the same functioning products. And so we're recommending going forward this project, even though it's slightly more than the original total budget for both pieces of the project. There's an economy of scale of doing all of this work all at once, which is why we are recommending moving forward it at this time. And in an effort to further curb the cost of this project, we are planning to use our Public Works Department to help deconstruct the existing furniture and dispose of it.
Thank you. Mr. Valla, are there any board questions?
What did we allocate for it?
So there was a total of $150,000 for the entire project. That's both carpet and furniture. The carpet, as the board might recall, was just over $62,000. The furniture is expected to be about $104,000. So overall, we're expecting about $166,000 actual versus the $150 budget.
Any other board questions? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize purchase of office furnishings from Lizelle of Lansdale, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $104,147.
I'll second. Seeing as there has been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Next is consideration of authorizing purchase of recycling containers. Ms. Bernhardt?
Good evening. The last time I was standing before you with my colleague Patrick Graham, we presented you the 902 Municipal Recycling Grant Program that we received through the Department of Environmental Protection. This program included the purchase of recycling containers for residents with an additional educational component. I'm pleased to report that the initial registration of the recycling containers was incredibly successful. We received an overwhelming number of requests and registered the initial 2,500 bins in just two days. Due to the high demand, we've opened a waitlist for residents who are not able to initially register. And as of today, there are nearly 1,000 residents on the waitlist, which will be closing Wednesday afternoon. We've also received valuable feedback from residents that they're looking for larger bins. We're currently in the fourth year of our five-year contract with Waste Management, and these containers will be compatible with Waste Management moving forward after this contract ends. Tonight, we're asking for approval from the board to purchase up to 1,500 additional recycling containers from the CoStarz vendor Toder. This purchase will be funded with an unrestricted fund balance in the sanitation fund. We believe that this purchase will help to meet the demand of our residents for new recycling containers, and we're confident that this will continue to be successful in promoting recycling in the township.
Thank you, Ms. Bernhardt. Are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. First, thank you to Ms. Bernhardt and Mr. Graham for doing a great job organizing and rolling out this program. I just want to comment that the last time our Waste Management contracts or our trash removal contract generally came up for consideration, there was a lot of resonant resistance to moving to these large toders, replacing people's own trash receptacles. I think what we've learned through this program is that people are actually strongly supportive of these large rolling toders as opposed to, you know, having to provide their own trash and recycling receptacles. So I think that is an additional positive that's came out of this program. So but thank you to you and Mr. Graham. Great job.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of 1,500 recycle containers from Tater Statesville, North Carolina, in the amount not to exceed $66,905.
I'll second.
Seeing as there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes carry, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update or the funding report for the American Rescue Plan Act. Ms. Tealy Coles?
Thank you very much. Just a reminder that we received 4.7 million through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. In 2022, the first 2.5 million of this funding was allocated. We were a municipality that had revenue loss, and so we are mostly unrestricted as to how we allocate the money. But we do have to report how we allocated the money. So as far as the initial 2.5 million, as you guys will recall, we did fund quite a bit of technology and improvements to the meeting room. We had some infrastructure, actually covered overtime costs and some fire services expenses. And again, I just wanted to bring this up because we will need to allocate the remaining 2.2 million this year. We have a couple of really good potentials for that. You don't need to make a decision tonight. We have, coming up in May, we will be opening the bid for the Public Works winter operations. If you recall, this is something that we rejected bids and we tried to, you know, sort of scale it back. So that project might come in somewhere right around this number. We also have the Swift Road Intersection Project, which would be another big infrastructure project. And so again, nothing for you to have to make a decision on tonight, but I just wanted to put it on your radar. And Megas and her team in Finance have reported this 2022 allocation. And we'll just need to keep talking about this over the next couple of months for the 2023 allocation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions before?
Just quickly, so the, am I correct that the Public Works project, as well as the Swift Road, and I think Langhorne Gables?
Langhorne Gables was one, yeah.
Right, and they were all part of the budget anyway, right?
Correct.
Regardless of whether we decide to use this funding.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have an appointment to be made on the Human Relations Commission, so I'll accept a nomination.
I would like to make a nomination to appoint Jill Camerata to the Human Relations Commission. Jill is a resident of Middletown Township. She's had 20 years' experience in communications, so I'd like to recommend her to the Human Relations Commission.
Seeing there's been a nomination, is there a motion to accept the nomination?
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination.
I'll second it. Are there any board questions or any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of appointing Jill Camerata to the Human Relations Commission for a one-year term, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Ayes carry, 5-0. Congratulations. Next, we have other business. So Mr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you. I would like to discuss a zoning hearing board application with the board. This is not on the agenda. So in order for the board to take any action on this, I'm going to ask that the board make a motion to add to the agenda the review of zoning hearing board application of Pancash Patel related to vacant land on Sunset Avenue. After you make such a motion, we can then discuss it and you can possibly take some action on it.
So moved.
Second.
You have to vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. I know it's just a technicality that we have to do it that way. So Mr. Patel has made a zoning hearing board application to request a variance to build a new single-family home on vacant land on Sunset Avenue that is within the FEMA floodplain, and it's on an undersized lot. After just some discussions on this application with the Township Engineer and the Township Director of Building and Zoning, we kind of feel that it will... director of building and zoning, we kind of feel that it will have some negative impacts on the surrounding properties. So we believe that you should vote to send me to oppose such application to try to convince the zoning hearing board not to grant the variances for it. And if you have any questions on it, I'd be glad to answer them, or Mr. Ennis could answer them, but if not, you can make such a motion.
I'll make a motion to send Mr. Esposito to the zoning hearing board meeting.
I'll second.
Oops, sorry. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes carry, five zero.
Thank you. I have one other thing. I just want to announce that the board did hold an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss labor matters and litigation matters.
Thank you. Other business, Mr. Kessler.
Nothing else to add. Thank you.
Mr. Valla?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Tealikles?
Thanks. Two quick things, just to follow up on Local Government Day. I just wanted to recognize the whole township team for putting together such a great and fun Local Government Day experience. And then I just wanted to say a couple of quick things about Sergeant Lubold. I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to squeak it in or not. The chief mentioned just what a gentleman he was and is. I would just like to say personally, he was just always someone who had such a positive and upbeat attitude and someone who spent 33 years in patrol. Day in, day out, on the street, just a true public servant, and really appreciate the sacrifices he made for our community and also the sacrifices of his family, giving up his time. He will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Ms. Kay?
Just wanted to say congratulations to those that retired and thank you for your service. Additionally, thank you for the residents that came out for the first public meeting for the multimodal plan. Just a reminder that the links have been posted on our website. Please, we recommend going out and filling that survey out, looking at the Wiki Maps. It will be essential for the continuation of the plan. Thank you.
Supervisor Kirk?
I just wanted to congratulate Sergeant Lubold and Officer McPherson on retirement and thank them for their years of service and wish them luck in their retirement.
Supervisor Hannah?
Also, I wanted to say thank you to Sergeant Michael Lubold, Officer Glenn McPherson, and congratulations on their retirement. Thank you for all of our public servants. Also wanted to remind everybody about Community Cleanup Day coming Saturday, April 22nd. If you get a chance, please sign up on the website. It's nice to make our community beautiful.
Thank you. Supervisor Keza?
Thank you, yeah, of course. Congratulations and thank you to Officer McPherson and Sergeant Lubold. I also just want to join with Township Manager Ms. Tealikles in thanking the township staff for all of their efforts on Local Government Day. This day was awesome, and I just can't thank the, all of the department directors and the township manager's staff enough for what they did for these kids. They learned a ton about local government, about community helpers, and I think they had a really good time. So thank you, everybody, for putting that together.
Thank you, and I will also congratulate Sergeant Lubold and Mr. McPherson on their retirement. And I do want to note, didn't the, didn't, wasn't there a poll that was taken on Local Government Day, a park versus a field of sorts, and the field was the winner? Is that?
Field was the overwhelming winner, I believe.
Was that right? It kind of varied, group to group.
Yeah, it did.
There was some serious debate, though.
Four to two.
Really? Okay.
I just wanted to note there, you know, that they didn't, you know, make a, make a decision on local government.
Where are we building it, Paul? That's the question.
Yeah.
We know who to turn to now for decision-making.
Yeah. So with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.